Welcome everyone to the December 16th, 2016 School Committee Meeting. On the agenda, we were just in executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations. On the agenda tonight is the approval of minutes from December 5th. For new business, we have the 2017-2018 school calendar, the designation of records access officers, the MCAS Park results, and for old business, we have the donations, fiscal year 18 budget, and the superintendent's report to the committee. Future agenda items which will include the fiscal year 18 budget and the school improvement plans. So to start off, is there anyone for any public input tonight?
Too cold apparently.
Okay. Then we'll move right into the approval of minutes from December 5th.
I move to approve the December 5th minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And for new business, we have the 2017-2018 school calendar.
Thank you Madam Chair. As you know, this is the time of year we try to get the calendar prepared for next school year, and we typically vote by the end of January or early February. So just looking for some guidance, we made some changes in this current school year's calendar where we had a half day prior to Labor Day and a half day prior to Thanksgiving weekend. So the two typical days in Medfield that were days off. I'm happy to report that on the day before Labor Day was 93 or 94 percent attendance, and then 90 percent attendance prior to Thanksgiving. So I think that, you know, parents responded nicely and the kids came to school, and that was, you know, part of that process was making sure we would get earlier in June. That was one of the things that we were working on last year. So just looking for some guidance around that. Also, Veterans Day falls on a Saturday next year, so typically I believe the state is asking us to recognize Veterans Day on the Friday before, on the 10th. But really nothing else out of the ordinary. Religious holidays are in September, and there's only one Jewish holiday in September that falls during the school day, the others on a Saturday. So we gain a day there as well. So we'd like just any input that you might have as we develop that.
Jeff, did we implement this year the extended professional development day?
It's in April.
It's in April. So I think that's a useful tool that we, you know, spend a lot of time negotiating with the union.
Right.
The half days, I have to be honest, we get a day back on the calendar, but half day, you know, I'm harkening way back to my own days as a teacher, but also, you know, hearing my kids about what they do on half day. If you don't have that half day, you have to go full day at some other time. I think that's probably a more fulsome learning experience than a half day right before a vacation or a long weekend. So I worry a little bit about taking two, what otherwise would be two full days and turning it into really two half days, because I know we get credit with the state for a full day for those.
Right.
So I just something to think about as we think about teachers', you know, feedback in terms of, are we covering everything we need to cover? You know, we always say, you know, if you knock a day off at the end, you're always going to have the last day of school, which is sort of wasted day, no matter when it is. You can have it in December, or May, or June, it's always going to be a wasted day. But these half days kind of tucked in the middle of the year, which otherwise would be full days tucked in the middle of the year, are a little more concerned to me, but...
Okay.
Did you get, or have you gotten feedback from leadership or from teachers regarding that?
Both two days?
Yeah.
No. No feedback at all on that.
Okay. I think, from what I heard from parents, I appreciated that, but then I, you know, some parents have the leeway to go on holiday, teachers do not.
Yeah.
You know, they can't take that day off. So I was just wondering what their feedback is.
Well certainly, in negotiations, I mean, not without discussing full details in negotiation, it was important to the teachers to have the school year end sooner in the month of June.
Yeah.
It's something you have to, I mean, you have to have the number of days we've negotiated.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're still looking to start the last week in August, having Monday, Tuesday as teacher days, and then kids start on Wednesday, so Wednesday, Thursday, and then either, you know, half day Friday, full day Friday, whatever that turns out to be. So that worked pretty well this year. It gets us, you know, if we don't have a lot of snow days this year, it gets us out fairly early. We really want to try to avoid that third and fourth week of June, you know, which is not great for kids or teachers being in that hot building, and especially on the second floors, as everybody over there talks about all the time. So we know, we know it's just not a great environment for kids and teachers, so...
It is, it's a longer Christmas vacation though, right?
Next year?
Yeah.
Maybe by a day or two.
The holiday falls on Monday, so I don't think we'd be back, we'd be back Tuesday or we'd be back Wednesday?
I have to look.
I think we'd be back Tuesday, I guess.
Yeah, we do come back the second though, it's not the third. This year we come back the third.
Right, okay.
Next year it's the second.
Well, so it'd be, it'd be 10 days, 10 days, or 10 or 11 days instead of...
Yeah, I think it's one extra day than we have this year. Because this year's a short one.
Yeah.
Right.
It's short. Okay. And that, in terms of half days, if we do do the extended professional development that Chris had mentioned, that takes place on a half day. So we look to do that, depending on how it goes this year, we'll evaluate that with the union, because that was a mutual agreement. If we both liked it, then we would do it, if not, then we wouldn't do it, so...
Right, so with that happening in April, we probably have to approve two calendars then, right?
Well, no, because it doesn't impact the students, it only impacts the teachers, so it happens on a release day.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So whatever release day we pick or choose, it makes sense to do it during that. So we'll have a draft for you, the January 9th meeting, if that makes sense? Take a look at it, and then hopefully go down at the 25th or the 1st of February. Thank you. And if you think of anything else, just shoot me an email. Okay, thanks.
So the next item on the agenda is the designation of records access officers.
So this, thank you, this is a new law that goes into effect at the beginning of the year, part of the municipal revamping that Governor Baker has signed into law. Basically what this means is that you have to, both the town and the school district need to designate someone who is in charge of the records. So if someone does a records request, Freedom of Information Act, it's often called at the federal level, then that person is in charge of gathering those information and making sure it happens in a timely manner. So it's really something that we will do, I talked to the town about it last week, and they're going to designate two people, one person that's be the main person, and one if that person's not there, which I'd ask you to do the same tonight. And then they're going to post it on the website, so if you have school questions, you would contact me presumably, or Michael. Michael would be the backup if I'm out there. And then the town is doing the same thing with Christine, and I forget who else they're having as their backup, but they're going to have two people as well. So that is just something that we need to do by the 1st of January, and then, as I said in an email, that Andy will be coming in, Andy Waugh, our attorney, will come in and just kind of review that with us in January, because there are some changes that he wants to make sure that we know about. If he can't do the January 9th meeting, which may be difficult for him, he'll do that in February for us, and just review that information and make sure we're in line with what we need to do. So I would ask that you would consider to designate me as the records access officer with Michael LaFrancesca as the backup, so records officer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Is that designated by name or title? Which we're going to have to...
Title.
Okay.
Thank you, yeah, title. So the minutes should have be Superintendent and Director Finance and Operations instead of my name and Michael's name. All right. Thanks, Chris.
Then we now have to do it again.
All right.
Until the law changes.
Well, that's right. We'll change somebody's title.
Exactly.
Right.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, we have the MCAS and Park results presentation I'd like to do for you quickly. I think we've touched upon this in meetings past, that our kids did a real nice job, and our teachers continue to do well with this, and I wanted to just review it. Remember, it was the first time we did Park, so there are some changes in there, but the state, for all the grief that I give them, really did a nice job in making sure that we could actually compare apples to apples with MCAS to Park. And I'll show you once I do the presentation, they were able to do some calculations so that we can actually compare that.
So just a little, you know, primer on what we do in terms of MCAS and Park and the difference between the two. So they're both criteria and reference tests, which means that they are based on standards. And I always use that example, we were in school and took the California Achievement Test, those were norm reference tests, so they, 100 kids took the test, and they just put everyone's scores down, and that's how they norm reference them. But this is based on the criteria, which are the standards. They're a combination of multiple choice, short answer, and open response. MCAS was administered in grade 10, so that even though we went to Park, the state is still requiring us to keep MCAS in grade 10 as a graduation requirement, and that will stay for a few more years, even though they roll out the MCAS 2.0. Grades 5, 8, and 9 also at MCAS Science, and then Park was administered last year, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. And in 2013, they began the infusion of the Massachusetts Frameworks into both MCAS and Park. Massachusetts Frameworks are based on the Common Core, but they're a little bit more rigorous with additional standards, and our kids have been exposed to them the last couple of years. There we go. So just the achievement levels that are a little bit different. MCAS achievement levels, which you're used to for the last 20-something years, advanced, proficient, needs improvement, warning. Park has five levels, exceeded expectations, met expectations, approached expectations, partially met expectations, and did not meet expectations. So that's, again, based on the Park exam and the norm that they, excuse me, the achievement levels they distinguished. So if you remember this from years past, the CPI in the student growth, those are really important index to look at. So the composite performance index, or the CPI, so every child that gets a test score in advanced, proficient, gets assigned 100 points. That high needs improvement area is 75, the low needs improvement is 50, and the warning is zero points. And remember, they take the amount of kids and divide that, and then that's where you get the CPI. Remember, we're looking for CPIs in the mid 90s. Everything above 90 is good, but we want to be in the mid 90s, upper 90s are great. And then the student growth percentage is that cohort comparison we've talked about in years past, in which you take a child who gets a score in grade four, whatever score that is, and they're placed in a cohort with every kid in the state that got that same score, and they're comparison, they compare it to their score the previous year, and then see how much growth they've had. The median growth is 50, and we know the moderate growth is 40 to 60. So below 40 is less than moderate growth, above 60 is really good growth. And then that point down at the bottom, which I alluded to earlier, calculations for both were adjusted for Park so that an accurate comparison can be made to MCAS, which is really great. That was part of the deal that the department made with us, is that we would do, we would try out Park if they made it so that we could compare both tests. So that was a good thing on their part, and they succeeded with that. So let's take a look at the grade three results. Again, I wanted to give you a sense of how our kids scored, and then the CPI, and then of course, there's no student growth in grade three, because that's the first time they take the test. But in the parent sees, you'll see the difference from the previous year of MCAS. So ELA math, and math were assessed in grade three. You look at our students' levels four and five, which again could be akin to advanced and proficient, in MCAS, we had 83 percent or plus 1 percent, so there was a little bit of growth, but just about the same. CPI at 94.5, plus 0.6 percent, so we're right at that midpoint in CPI where we want to be, so that's a good score for our kids in ELA. Math, we see a decrease. Last year was the first year ever in Medfield that we had a 90 percent math of advanced proficient at grade three. You see 81 percent there, minus 9 percent, but that CPI is still pretty high at 95.5, and again, the student growth isn't calculated. So again, you could take a look at the factors that are in there, it is based on the frameworks. We had a new math program last year, but, you know, 95.5 still a pretty good CPI. We'd need a couple more years of data to see whether that was a real, whether the math program was a, usually have that implementation dip the first time you do some sort of program. You really can't make that determination at this point, because it was a different test and a different program. But again, our kids did real well there. Grade four, you'll see the level four and five, 82, plus 6 percent, and the CPI at 93, just a hair below where we want to be. Math at 81 percent, which was exactly the same as the previous year, which is interesting in the different test, and 93.3. And again, those growth numbers, both in ELA and math were above the moderate, but you saw last year, if you remember, we had an unbelievable growth number in mathematics at Dale Street, but minus 12 there, but still, you know, above moderate growth at 61 percent. Looking at grade five, again, plus 6 percent ELA, 86 percent, really nice CPI there at 97.6, and the student growth, let's check out that growth, 71 with plus 28 there. Mathematics, again, pretty much the same, minus 1 at 82 percent, really nice CPI at 96.2, and growth numbers again, strongly at 69. And it didn't really show up, oh, it did show up a little, I tried to squeeze it in on this slide. The Department of Ed recognized Dale Street for, commended them for high progress. So the last couple of years, we've had steady increases in the scores at Dale Street. And I have to tell you, the teachers have been working real hard there. You know, we have different groups of kids doing well, and the teachers have been really working hard, so we're really proud of the work that's going on the last couple of years there to get that commendation from the state.
It's interesting though, Jeff, the high student growth there, it's the same class that had such a high student growth the year before.
Previous, yeah. Yeah. Good point.
So what's an example of what they're doing differently? I mean, or what changed?
In terms of...
In terms of the growth, I mean, the mass improvements.
Well, I would say, you know, taking a look at consistent experiences within the grade level, you have eight or nine teachers on a grade level, there's a lot of things going, so really that move to kind of be consistent there for those experiences. They've worked a lot with our math consultant, that has really helped all the elementary teachers. We've had a math consultant now, this will be the third year. She's working 34 days, and we contract out for this, 34 days this year, where she goes in, works with the teachers, models lessons, does a lot of that data work with them, and they're at the point now where she's observing them teach and giving them feedback. That's the step this year that we're going into. So really, you know, they've really worked hard on that, but have had that support and time to do that. You know, that really hasn't been the case before, so we really built in that time to have them, all the elementaries, you know, work with the math consultants, it's been a real focus. And then, you know, Jamie Callahan has a really nice job working with teachers as well, supporting them in language arts, and we really try to streamline some of the assessments we're doing, so that, they're formative assessments for teachers, so they get a sense of, okay, now I know where my kids are, what can I do to intervene in the interventions that take place? So it's been, I have to tell you, it's been, you know, our kids work hard, but the teachers have really done a nice job in that building, and all in the elementary really, to get that beefed up in the scores. You know, they've done a really good job with it. It's good teaching, is all it is. I mean, we're not passing out ditto's of taking tests, it's good teaching. Ooh, I skipped over grade six. So levels four and five, 84 percent, again, minus 1 isn't a lot there, not much of a change, but CPI really nice at 96 and a half, and then some great student growth, it's up 17 percent. And 75 percent, which is a plus 5 in math, you know, middle school math statewide, they struggle. You know, that's not, if you look at some of the scores that we have, that's probably our lowest, but that's a statewide issue that folks are working on. CPI, again, a low 90s, but a nice growth number there as well in grade six.
So Jeff, when you say that the middle school math struggles, what are, what do you mean?
I mean that statewide, those are the scores that aren't as strong as the others. So you have elementary, and you have high school math scores, and middle schools, you know, scores struggle a little bit. I mean, it's the tests, it's the kids' age, you know, there's a lot of factors in there where middle school is, you know, difficult. And it's increased rigor, when you get into algebra and some other things, I mean, that's, it's tough for them, tough concepts. Grade seven, levels four and five, 89 percent, again, minus 2 isn't really a huge change there, but great CPI at 97, and some nice growth at 74, which is a gain of 8. 73 percent at levels four and five, CPI 87, you see there's that number we're talking about. And then, but student growth at 68, still decent growth, but not much of an increase from the previous year. But again, that CPI, we want that to be in the mid 90s, and it's been consistently around that number, the high 80s for a few years now. Grade eight, great CPI at 97.2, so nice, the growth went up, that was a low growth the last couple of years, so that's nice to have that over the median. And then language arts, same thing, right at the midpoint of 95. And then that great student growth percentage, plus 30, that was a lower one the last couple of years too. So that's a nice response there. Again, so, you know, my spiel on this thing, that's where our numbers should be at grade 10. Kids doing really well, 98 percent advanced proficient, CPI at 99.3, student growth at 50. And 95 is the advanced proficient in math, CPI at 98, again, just really strong, but we would expect that based on that test. But some nice growth on both of those, at 67 percent. So looking at the science, the science scores, you know, that, you look at some of these CPI scores in five and eight, again, that's where we want to be, mid 90s. And we're stuck in the 80s there for a long time. And then at grade nine, that test is, again, kids do real well on that, 93 percent, CPI very, very high. But I think we've had conversations of what that looks like in terms of high school MCAS, and those scores should be really high. So looking at longitudinally, like where we are as a, oops, where we are as a district, just getting a snapshot of where we are in terms of language arts and math, you see pretty consistent with mathematics, I mean, pretty much the range of 86 to 88, pretty much the entire time, but you see some really nice growth in math in the district. So district-wide, you saw 74 there in 2010, district-wide up to 81 percent. So some really strong growth in mathematics, district-wide. I think that's certainly, you didn't have that strong growth in the elementaries when they weren't doing as well, so they really brought that up in the last few years. The high school always did real well with that, but the elementaries have really pushed that to get us up until the 80s, district-wide in mathematics, which is nice. Done a real nice job of that. So again, how do we use this, and what do we do? It's really a conversation about what we're doing well, what can we do better, identifying some of those trends in the curriculum, making those adjustments. And then in the elementary schools, the teachers receive some of their classroom data, so they'll get a sense of how their class did the next year. So they'll get that directly to them from the principal, to get a sense of how their class did, and what they could do. And have conversations with other teachers of what things went well, are there some concepts that our kids as a grade level aren't getting, that we need to work on, those kinds of things? So really good collegial conversations to improve instructional learning. And then again, in leadership in grade level and departments, you know, how do we use this to improve our instruction for all kids? Consistent learning experience, consistent opportunities, common assessments, and then using some of this data for our grade level and department goals as we go forward. So just kind of a snapshot of what we talked about a few years ago here, actually a couple years ago, in 2014, when we talked about some of these, so we thought of areas that we could improve as a district to help our scores. One of them was support teacher collaboration through a scheduled common planning time for all grade levels and departments. That was something that we did through negotiations that we felt was important, teachers agreed and thought it was something that was important to have a common planning time for grade levels and departments. Create large interrupted blocks of learning time, K to 5, we're getting there, we're not there yet, but certainly we've made schedule improvements the last couple of years that are helpful for instructional learning. Expand the student day pre-K to 5 to provide more quality instructional time. I think, you know, we did that this year, and we're still looking at that. Certainly have gotten really good feedback on it, it's less of a stress, but there's other stuff that we can do to improve that as well. Align the elementary school days to better facilitate collaboration, professional development, we did that this year. And just as an aside, one thing that, you know, I never really thought was going to come out of this, because it really was so focused on instructional learning on this whole piece, but at the senior center last week, and then at the DPW the week before, people have commented, the traffic is so much better with just two bus runs. I never really, you know, it never really crossed my mind during that process, I was really focused on making sure that the buses ran on time, and that we weren't running 18 buses with seven kids in each of them, you know, but they, and the police department have mentioned it too, that that time of not having 36 buses a day on the town is really, really a positive thing. So that's kind of a byproduct of something that we did educationally. Provide content coaches that work directly with teachers, pre-K through 12, that's the math piece we were talking about. Again, we're contracting out for that, we'd love to have more of those positions all through the district, that we're just not there yet. Continue to provide additional professional development, which we've been doing ongoing. And I think the one thing I would add to that since 2014, provide additional support for special education, pre-K through 12. I think that's something that, you know, we look at the, we look at the achievement gap that happens statewide, and the conversation is always around students of color and white students in that achievement gap. So our achievement gap's a little bit different here, ours is special education and non-special education. I think that's what we're trying to work on, and you'll see later on the budget that we're starting to do that, but it's going to be a multi-year process in making sure that we provide the additional instruction that kids need, the specialized instruction that kids need.
Jeff, when you say with respect to content coaches, that we're not there yet, because we're not ready, or because we can't fit that in the budget?
Just not in the budget. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we would like to have a math content coach and a language arts one in each building. I mean, that to me is a really good model that other districts have seen some good success with, and I think the model that we're using now in math in elementary has really proven to be successful. You know, we have the consultant, but also a couple of coaches, that one at Dale Street and one at Wheelock, and a part-time person at Memorial, and that's been helping out, but we could use more of that to have more, again, it's not, it's not just pulling kids out, that's not the intent of it. The intent of it is to work with teachers, team teach, so that, you know, you can do more in that classroom with two professionals versus one, so that's the whole piece behind that.
What is the cost to do that?
It'd be a teacher salary, you know, so, you know, Michael, what are we talking...
Well, with the elementary math, we hire an outside person.
We do. So we have content coaches, but then we have, but they pull out kids, and they do a lot of coaching, they do a little bit of both. They do intervention, and they do some coaching. We use the consultant strictly for coaching, does not work with kids at all. We've seen that model work really well. Michael, what are we budgeting for?
67,000.
I'm sorry?
67,000.
67,000. So that's, you know, there's a lot of things we'd like to put in there, and that would be another position that we'd like to add. So questions or comments on that?
So is MCAS 2.0 actually rolling out this year?
It is. And you'll see that in the budget presentation, it has implications, because we're required to do it online, and it requires us to get additional Chromebooks district-wide that we can use, and even with the additional Chromebooks, we're not going to be able to have every kid in the grade level take the test at the same time, we're going to have to do rotations. So we're going to be doing that in four and eight next year, and then within three years, the entire district will be doing it all online.
Sorry, can you, who is, everyone is required to do them online this year?
Four and eight.
Oh, four and eight.
Yeah, four and eight.
Okay, so, and we don't have enough Chromebooks to...
No. So we'll have, we'll set up rotating labs and classrooms kind of thing?
Right.
Because you can't have it in a way that, you can't use an iPad for it, because you'd have to wipe off the whole thing, because we don't own them. So you have to wipe it all out, take control of the iPad for three or four days, it's just...
Right, but are these the Chromebooks that have been given to the juniors and seniors, you're just going to collect them for the test period?
No, we have, they're using them. We have in the budget additional Chromebooks to purchase. That's the next presentation.
Okay.
It's in there, it's in the next one.
Yeah.
Anything else on the test? So the good news is, I mean, it's still making progress, kids doing well, teachers working hard, I mean, that's, and again, it's a snapshot, it's not the end-all, be-all. You know, we don't define ourselves by it, but it's pretty important, and I think that, you know, we should be proud of the work that's happening, doing some really good stuff. Marian, am I next on the budget, or is there something before?
You are, it's donations and then budget, but why don't you just...
Can we do that out of order? Would you mind? Okay. You know, I think people just say it's a cover slide, but I think it's important for us to just, you know, recognize some of the great stuff that's going on in our district. You know, we, we try to choose these pictures, they all come off my Twitter feed, but just some really good stuff. I mean, Chris, you in that picture over there? I don't think you are on the one on the left. I don't think so. You were too busy dancing at that point. So I mean, I just think, you know, you look at it from a, a district point of view. You have the seniors on the left, you have a first grader showing me how he's coding. I asked him to, I asked him to, I had a video and I wanted to tweet the video out. And I said, can you just tell me how you figured all that out? He goes, I don't want to tell you, just take me, just take my picture instead. Awesome. And I saw him the other night at the, his, his sister plays in the, the middle school orchestra. So I saw him the other night at the, the middle school orchestra concert. He was, he was funny. So, and then, you know, some of the wellness stuff that we're doing at the, at Blake. We, we do full yoga and everything in the, in the wellness classes and the phys ed classes. And then, you know, lastly, one of our students last week during the hour of a code showing, showing me some of the stuff that he's developed and just, just real good stuff. So again, a lot of good things going on and it's important to remind us why we go through all this budget stuff because it's for the kids that are on the screen there. So in terms of our process so far, the leadership team, we met, we established those priorities using Medfield twenty twenty-one as, as something to really, drive what we're, what we're focused on for the budget. The principals, content specialists all developed those budgets and submitted them to Michael and I. And then we met with all the principals and content specialists to go over that, go over why they needed this and what positions they needed, et cetera, et cetera. Board of Selectmen, the warrant committee held their meeting for department heads to communicate, which I always affectionately call the doom and gloom meeting. And then superintendent and leadership team, you know, we've, we've met to revise and go over some of the priorities. And then we, Michael and I developed the, the initial budget for you this evening. So Medfield twenty twenty-one has items with direct implications in our budget. So even though we'll be working on other things as part of the strategic plan, there are some that have direct budget implications that are, that are here. So in our goal number one, committed to collaborative learning culture of continuous improvement for students and staff. Maintain enhanced current staffing is, is really a huge part of this FY eighteen budget. Continue the commitment to professional development is also a big part of that. Strengthen and expand our steam and then commitment to one-on-one initiative in six through twelve. So those are really probably the four main budget implications as we get into the numbers. And goal number two, supporting and developing the health and social well-being of our students and staff. And certainly maintaining our current staff will do that for both kids and staff. And we would talk in terms of what we're doing for wellness and then our RISE program, which is our transitional program. Committed to developing the whole child and recognizing the contributions and needs of all students. Certainly our special education staffing has been a, will be a push in our, in Medfield twenty twenty-one and this year's budget has the, the beginning of that. ELL staffing, although there isn't additional, is not an additional ELL staffing in this initial budget. I think we're going to be in a position where we might need to add one as we go through this process leading up to town meeting. So we're not there yet, but that's something that is in our plan and something we need to really strongly consider. And then certainly to maintain, enhance our opportunities for students outside the classroom, which is a big part of that as well. Goal number four, committed to contributing to a vibrant community by fostering collaborative, communicative and consistent education for all of our students. You know, the big part of that in terms of the budget is the appropriate asset and, and resource allocation for all schools and departments. If you remember, that was one of the things that we worked on the last couple of years, we had a kind of an imbalance in the elementary schools. You know, one elementary school was getting a lot more than the other and we, we tried to balance that all out based on the staffing and kids and so on. So just, you know, continue to work on that. And then our, our goal number five is committed to the continued investments in the facilities and equipment to optimize student learning. So again, maintain the director of facilities position, that new position we started this year in conjunction with the town. The resource allocations for buildings and then our technology infrastructure, which kind of keeps the engine running as we go along. That's really an important piece. We can't skip on that because we have too much invested in student learning to, to do that. So that's, you know, an important piece that, how our, our Medfield twenty twenty-one really drives what we're doing in our budget. So there's some assumptions in here, which again, we may not get to by the time town meeting comes around. But certainly we wanted to put them in, into the development of this. Pretty straightforward, the first couple, our federal entitlement grants be level funded, chapter seventy be level funded. You know, the last couple of years, the state has, has thrown us a little bit of extra, extra money after our town meeting, which the town, you know, certainly goes in the general fund of the town, where it's an extra twenty-five or fifty dollars a kid based on your enrollment. And they've increased chapter seventy that way. We're not sure how that's going to play out this year. Our enrollment will increase slightly, so we're still seeing that uptick. You know, we've, we've had, I think we've had thirty new kids since school started across the district. And we, we have our projections, which will be in your budget books when you get them. The latest NESDEC projection has us back to three thousand kids in eight years. So that's, that's going way back up again. I'm sorry?
What is it this year?
Twenty-seven hundred?
Oh, twenty, twenty-six and change. What is it, Mike? Thank you, twenty-six, thirty-eight.
That's without accounting for significant?
Right.
Building.
Right, so that's based, you know, a lot of it's based on live births. They do that cohort model where they do that. And then just the real estate that they've had, you know, the, the, been a lot of real estate movement in town and, and kids and families are coming in. So to that end, you know, one of the things that we, we need to consider for, for next year is possibly a reduction in full-day kindergarten because of the space issue. So we may need to reduce one full-day kindergarten class and make that to half-day classes, which is not something we want to do. But, you know, Missy and I are still working on that space and what we're looking at. But that is a possibility, but, so we, we did that in this one. So we, we reduced full-day kindergarten by one class in this initial budget and that takes away revenue. So that's why we wanted, we wanted to kind of make worst-case scenario here as we go through this. So that revenue is taken out. Implementation of a hundred, one hundred and seventy-five dollar one-to-one technology fee, which would be just students who are in a one-to-one environment with school-owned devices. So that would be the incoming sixth grade class in the, in next year's eleventh and twelfth grade class. Just those kids would pay a fee because they have the school bought one-to-one. Again, that's a much larger conversation, but it's just something that we put in as an assumption we built this budget, which, which gets to a ninety-six thousand dollar offset by collecting those fees.
So Jeff, that's assuming that there are going to be some sixth graders, whatever, that want to buy their own devices or they would have to, this incoming sixth graders would have to buy, have to purchase?
Yes, we would purchase devices for incoming sixth grade, but if someone really wanted to do that, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't tell them no. I mean, it kind of defeats the whole purpose of why we're doing it.
Right.
But by having the Apple management system we have there now.
Right.
It, it does give us a lot more control than we've ever had. So we, we're seeing less issues that have come up in the past with the texting and all that other stuff that went on because of that Apple management system.
That is so good, I must say, I have a sixth grader and that is so good. There, you don't hear a lot of gaming, because, because of that Apple ID management system, that the level, I think, of gaming and some of the stuff that was.
Right.
A real concern with other classes isn't really happening.
So, you know, the iPad is certainly worth, certainly costs more than, than a Chromebook. So the cost that we're looking at was the iPad, the insurance, all that, all rolled into one, that we would, we would take care of that. So that's for the incoming sixth grade only for iPads and then continue with the eleventh and twelfth grade using the Chromebooks. So we'd only have a one-to-one fee again in those three grades. And again, it's not a conversation for tonight because unless you want to talk about it tonight, but just, just to give you a sense of what we took in when we, we did this. And then circuit breaker will be funded at sixty-five percent. So it's pretty conservative, you know, in years past, it's been, you know, I've seen it as low as forty-two, but the last couple of years it's been seventy, seventy-two. But we wanted to be a little conservative in this projection, so we did it at sixty-five percent. And remember, circuit breaker, we use that money to offset costs for special education. And we get that a year after. So the circuit breaker money we get next year is based on this year's kids and they, once they, their services go over a threshold that they tell us, then we get a reimbursement based on those costs. So our drivers, I mean, pretty consistent with the last couple of years. Instructional and personnel costs, you know, every budget you see in the schools is going to be eighty to eighty-five percent salaries. Our CBA agreements, unit A is in year three. Remember, we did a one-year plus a three-year. So this next year coming up is, is year three in that. All of our other CBAs, so that's custodial union, secretary union, cafeteria workers union, those are all up this year. So we start that negotiation process. We started an executive session, but we start meeting with them in the next month or so. So we start doing that. Transportation, we have a new three-year contract. We're going out to bid right after the break and we should get a pretty good sense of what that, that cost will be. But certainly we have transportation costs for both general education and special education that will be increasing.
Are there, are there other potential players in the transportation market now?
Uh, no, unfortunately no. Not that we're aware of. Our anticipation is, is that we'll get that one bid that we've gotten here forever. So special education, looking at positions out of district, in-district positions, transportation program development. Again, we're committed to developing those programs. We think it's important to develop programs to, to meet our needs of our kids, so we don't send students out of district. We think that's, philosophically, that's important to us, but also financially it is as well. Professional development, want to continue our commitment to teacher and administrative quality. And technology, continue our initiatives. Infrastructure, hardware replacement, we have a, so a lot of the stuff that was bought, I think, seven years ago for the last override. It's all coming of age now, we're doing a lot of repairs and the hardware that was bought is, is really obsolete at this point. So we're looking at replenishing some of that and replacing some of that hardware. And then although it doesn't really impact our budget, so to speak, health insurance costs definitely impact how much the town can support us. So it's always important to note that as a budget driver, even though it directly doesn't impact our budget, but it certainly is a driver. So here's the biggest driver for FY eighteen and those of you that were at the negotiations table know that one of the things that was an interest during the interest-based bargaining process was our max step teachers were, were not compensated as highly as our, our target areas and, and comp districts. So we used Holliston, Hopington, Westwood and Wayland as our four comp districts. And it was pretty clear from those negotiations that we were very competitive in the beginning, in the middle, but up at the top step, we weren't, we weren't as competitive as we would like. And I think it's important for us to, I think the committee agrees, it's important for us to stay competitive and, and it was time for a market correction. Well, next year is that year four, time for the market correction. So it was a multi-year process, where like I said, we did a one-year plus a three-year agreement. Year three is the market correction and what does that mean? So that all teachers receive a two percent increase with our max, max step teachers receiving an additional point five percent increase. Also with the longevity bonuses as well. So we, you know, we've talked about this before where longevity bonuses were our standard in teachers' contracts and they were very low here. And, you know, we made a conscious effort to make sure that our teachers were fairly compensated and, and making sure that we could retain people that, that we wanted to stay and that wanted to stay based on salary. If folks were leaving, they weren't going to leave us because of, of salary, wanted to make sure that we could keep people, keep people here. And, and certainly this next slide will show you by the numbers exactly what that correction means financially. But also, I think is, is a real testament to the community that, in my mind, a long-deserved market correction in terms of what, what teachers are being paid. So here's the numbers. So a hundred and nine teachers will now be at ninety thousand plus. Of that hundred and nine teachers, fifty-one of them will be at one hundred K plus. Seventy-eight teachers will move horizontally on the scale. Now that seventy-eight is based on what teachers let us know fairly early in the school year of what they anticipate moving to. Between now and probably the, probably the public hearing, we'll, we'll have that number lower because sometimes people think they're going to take classes and they don't take them. Or the class wasn't available, so they're not going to move horizontally to the next year. But remember, that's, that, that whole salary schedule is step and then horizontal for degree attainment. And then on top of that, the bonus if you get a certain amount of years and then a salary increase as well. So that, that, all that plays into this. The average full-time teacher salary will, will move next year to eighty-four, eight, eight-two. So that's up three, three thousand over previous years. And I have to tell you, it was in the, the low to mid-seventies for a while. In fact, when we were looking at it during negotiations, there were years where the average salary would go up just a couple hundred dollars. So this is a pretty good-sized jump, jump for them. But again, something that in a market correction, that's what happens. I mean, I think that Westwood did this a couple of years ago, they had to go through the same type of thing. And now, you know, we're, we're not even, still not up to what they're making, but we're a lot better than we were before. So the average increase in FY eighteen is six percent on teachers. So that, if you remember during negotiations, two thousand and twelve, you know, we had talked about the average at that point was the four to five range. You know, and so last year, teachers were at a one-point-two-five increase. So this bumps that up to the two, which is in some areas of the market and then the point five to get that, that max up to where it was. So that, that really is the driver here. I mean, that's, and, you know, no complaints from me. I think I'm, I don't think we're going to apologize for paying our teachers well. I think that's, it's, they deserve that, but that is, I'm being honest, that's, that's the driver. So that's what we're, we're looking at in terms of. The next slide tells you exactly what that increase looks like. We're all in. So that's everything that we've just talked about, not just the teacher's salary. And I already warned my folks on the warrant committee on this one. So that, the increase of thirty-three, seven oh seven, thirty-five is increases six-point-seven-five percent over the previous year. And let's talk about what that does. So it maintains our current staff and programs, includes steps, lanes, longevity, a two percent increase and a point five for top step. Increases professional development and, and it's important to note that professional development is in three different buckets. It's the research and development, which you saw last meeting. It's the conference and travel, which teachers go out and then also the course reimbursement, which is negotiated. So in that last contract, we bumped that up to, I think, forty-two-five, where teachers take courses, they get reimbursed to a certain point. And then that money's usually gone, you know, by the spring and then teachers can reapply the, the next year. Again, pretty standard, it's not anything outrageous in any teacher's contract.
That's on a fixed pool base, right?
It is, yeah, forty-two-five, so fixed, fixed pool there. And again, it's, it's pretty standard in, in teacher contracts. It, it eliminates one section of grade five and again, this is what we've done the last few years. We've eliminated one section of grade four last year and a section of grade three in the previous year. Expands the science curriculum K to five and at the high school. So this is, you know, a good amount of money here going into, we had thirteen teachers piloting science kits this year in elementary. We'd like to expand that to at least one kit per grade level and then purchase one more if we can. So that's, that's around twelve or thirteen thousand dollars there. And then really expand what we're doing with our robotics and engineering class at the high school. So there, we've had a lot of good feedback. Kids are excited about that class, but that class costs money because they're doing a lot of building and doing things. They don't have the supplies for that. So we started, you know, pretty much grassroots this year, but we want to expand that to get, get the full allotment of materials for those kids in that program. Adds two special education team chairs. So this, this is really the, the big, in, in terms of additional staff, that, that makes us six-point-seven-five. So these team chairs, we're, we're budgeting around sixty-seven for those. Again, we've talked about this in the past. So these positions will do all of that paperwork stuff that needs to get done through the special education process to free up our teachers to do more of instructional learning with kids. Right now, we have a lot of our teachers doing this work and that takes them away from, from working with kids. This would manage it. You know, we're looking at doing an elementary, middle, because we already have one at the high school, so that would, you know, would, would service that, that particular, those, those buildings. And then really, again, free up hours of instruction time for our teachers, hours of instruction time. Purchases one hundred Chromebooks for new MCAS testing, that's about a thirty thousand dollar cost right there. Purchases iPads for all incoming sixth graders, that's a lot more than thirty thousand dollars. That's about a hundred and twenty thousand for that. Increases our occupational therapy support, so we have a point eight that needs to be full-time to, to cover our IEPs that we need. Increases the general education and special education, transportation. Again, we're looking at probably about a one-fifty anyway in that, in that increase. And then, you know, one of the things that we've seen, we want to really include all of our staffing and training. And we feel if we include our teaching assistant, increase our teaching assistant days by two. Again, involves them more in the professional development piece and in the culture of the building instead of just being there the same day as the kids are. So that's a really important, important piece for us. So in terms of next steps, you know, certainly ongoing meetings with warrant committee and town officials. We have school committee meetings too coming up with the second one being our, our public hearing. And then annual town meeting on the twenty-fourth. So I think, as I always say at the initial, we're a long ways away from being complete on this. But I would say that certainly those budget drivers are going to keep that number up. It's, we're not going to be in a position to, to look at a two and a half or three percent increase, just not feasible based on what we have. So we, we got some work to do, but I would, again, this is always the initial, initial number.
So I understand, can you go back one slide pretty please? Thank you. That these are just the initial numbers. So I understand the Chromebook, you know, we need to, we need it to, for the testing.
Right, right.
State mandated testing. But for the iPads, for the incoming sixth grader now, I mean, just a few minutes ago, you were talking about this new control that they have, that there's less gaming, et cetera. And fortunate, we've been very fortunate to live on the good graces of the parents.
Correct.
Purchasing these. So I, I, I suppose if parents are willing, I mean, our, our kids have a lot.
Right.
And our kids, many of them have them even before the sixth grade. And our kids, many of them have them even before the sixth grade. So instead of it coming from the school budget, could we not, if the parents are so inclined, and I know there are different ways of getting loaners and things like that, why wouldn't parents still purchase them if they are able and willing?
That's a good question. So we're up to about 20%, 15% to 20% of iPads that we're giving to kids, that we're purchasing now and giving to kids, you know, based on hardships or, you know, philosophical differences or whatever. And I think that's what it really comes down to. And what you said, Anna Mae, is fine. Absolutely, people can do that. We can expect people to do that, and we can continue to do what we're doing. I think, you know, from my perspective, it's to bring it to you folks and see what you think. You know, philosophically, I think it's like a book to me. It's no longer just an extra, it's how we do business in schools.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we buy books, then we're, in my mind, we should buy this as well. But it doesn't have to be that way. I mean, I just, I just feel like-
But I suppose if I had a choice, I'd hire my teacher.
Oh, no question.
And buy an iPad.
Oh, no question.
And now I'd vote teacher.
You and I both. Yep, you and I both.
Okay. So I've got a question along those lines, because I'm one of those people that, you know, Nat sends out a survey about the iPads, and I fill out the survey for every child. But I, we haven't, and I know it's a big data-driven thing. I haven't seen a lot of the results of the surveys back.
Okay.
So maybe I know that they're coming in in January for school improvement plans, maybe a little bit of that information back.
Absolutely.
Because I think, being a parent of two middle schoolers now, I get a very mixed bag about the iPad anyways, just the usefulness of it, you know, kind of where our goals are going with the iPad. So it would be nice to see some of the results of all those surveys that we take regarding the iPad and kind of-
Yeah, he would absolutely share some of that with you. I mean, I thought he had sent them out, but maybe he didn't. You know, I'm in classrooms all the time, and I see some of the work that our teachers have done with the iPad. It's pretty impressive.
Right.
You know, I mean, they engage in learning that is really not available unless they were using that device. So, you know, I support what they're doing, but I also like the Chromebook. I like the Chromebook a lot. I like the Chromebook's price a lot.
Yeah.
And I like the work that our high school kids have done with the Chromebook. I mean, I think they've seen a real benefit to it, you know. So I hear you. I'll have, make sure that he brings that up when he does.
Right, and it would be nice to see both, you know, the parent, what the parents have to say, not only, because I know that there's some great work that is being, I see it all the time.
Yeah.
It would be nice to see what the parents are thinking, kind of, some of those surveys.
And, you know, some of the feedback that I get from parents really is they want the district to purchase them, you know. But I've also gotten that they just like having their own, and they own it, and that's it. So I've got it both ways, you know, in terms of that feedback. But I just feel like I need to bring that to you, and you guys decide whether you want to do that or not. But I think it's, and it may not happen this year, but I'll keep putting it on there anyway.
And-
Go ahead.
Sorry, and also the overall vision, because, you know, we bought Chromebooks the last two years, correct?
Right.
And so is the vision going Chromebooks, although those bio teachers really want to keep the iPad? So where's the, you know, where's the long-term unifying tech vision?
Right, so, you know, the thing is, is that right now, kids are going into their freshman year with their iPads, for the most part. And the science department has done a lot of work with iPads and are very, very committed to iPads. I think if you ask other departments, they would be very happy to have Chromebooks and not iPads, or just using, you know, a laptop. What we're trying to do is we're trying to figure out, we're trying to time it so that we begin to purchase them, and it goes like this, so that there isn't a situation where a parent has to buy two devices. So we've had parents buy devices all these years in middle school. We're trying to avoid that second purchase. So we're trying to bring it down and start it up so that they connect in a way that, you know, I think if I were, you know, on December 19th to tell you what I think, I mean, I would say in my mind that freshmen, sophomore, juniors, and seniors would go Chromebook, because we have iPad carts that folks could use if they really wanted to do some experiments with them, say, in bio, whatever, and then continue with the iPads at the middle school. I mean, that's just what I'm saying right now. And we've had a lot, we meet every single month, the administrative tech team, and we go through a lot of this work. And we're just trying to, we don't want to burden people to have to buy another device. That's what we're trying to do overall. But I think, device-wise, you'd see a split between the middle, and it's pretty common in districts, there's splits between devices all the time. In larger districts, you'll have one middle school using one, another one using another. It's pretty common. It's just that we have one of each, one in middle school, one high school. And I see our elementary kids are using both. Elementary kids are using both iPads and Chromebooks. So they're getting exposure to both devices, which I think is good for them. The little ones love the iPad, but some of the intermediate elementaries love the Chromebooks, so.
Can you, when it says maintains current staffing programs, does that mean like no net FTE increases? What does that mean by?
That means everyone that's employed today stays employed next year.
And no, okay.
No reductions.
No reductions.
Yeah.
But is there, what are the increases?
The only increase would be the 0.2 to the occupational therapist.
The ones that are listed.
Yeah, and the two special education chairs, that's it. Yeah.
So it's a net, it's a net of 1.2?
2.2 additional.
You're eliminating one section.
Right, yeah, right, net, yeah.
But then, and the enrollment is roughly level? It's going up?
It's going up.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what's going to tell us the next couple of, well, probably about a month, is what we're going to do in kindergarten. You know, that's going to be a big one. Because if we have to reduce that full-day kindergarten, then we need to open up a lottery system for that. We really haven't had to do that. We've really, we've kept it at 20 or 22, depending on what the interest was, and we've assigned a waiting list. But we haven't had a full-scale lottery yet, which may be in place if we, you know. And you remember, parents were here, and we were doing the strategic plan, and they were asking about, is there a plan for the free full-day kindergarten? I mean, this increases without that. I mean, that would tack on a few hundred thousand more.
Right, right.
So we're still tuition-based and tuition-driven in that kindergarten program.
A few hundred thousand more without taking capital, you need to build up the building.
Right, right. Yeah, because we're in a situation now where, you know, we're looking at space and, you know, I've lived in environments when art's been on a cart and all that, we don't want to do that. You know, that's not, it's not great. It's not great for kids, it's not great for teachers. So we don't want to do that. So we just need to be a little more creative with some of our space. But unfortunately, it may be a situation where we have to reduce the number of full-day kindergarten.
Because the yacht room at Memorial is maintained as an yacht room.
It is.
It's not being used as a-
Yeah, it is.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, and is that because you're expecting 30-plus, or right now even, the number of kindergarten kids coming into the district is so high that you have to?
Exactly.
So what is the expected number of kindergartners? Is that between 30 and 40?
Well, what happened last year, at this time, we had about 142 or so, and we ended up with 178. So it's just, it's ongoing.
Right.
You know what I mean? We can't, it was like the whole issue with the development on West Street. We couldn't predict what grades those kids were coming in, right? We knew it was within the 13 grades, we didn't know where they were coming. And we couldn't have predicted that the high school would get almost the most. I think the high school had nine kids out of that, or 10 kids initially, which never happens in high schools. You get a lot of move-ins in elementary schools, sometimes in middle school, but you rarely get them in high schools, unless someone's transferred and moves to town, for the most part, especially here, where the kids are together the entire 13 years, you know. So we can't predict that, so we've got to keep a close watch on that. And we have kindergarten information night coming up, and we'll get a better sense then, what that looks like. But it impacts preschool, too, because if parents want addition, it's a space issue over there now, you know, in terms of how we can provide the type of programs that parents want and expect for their preschool kids. It's going to be a challenge.
Can you break the $2 million increase? That represents, it can, maybe at some upcoming meeting, you can just break it down.
Absolutely. It'll be in your book when you get it. So when you get your budget book, it'll be in there. We thinking the end of this week or next, what are we thinking, Michael?
You've got to finalize it tomorrow, so I'll have to-
So you think by the end of, by Friday, yeah? We should have it by then.
Jeff, philosophically, buying the iPads, I totally get.
Yeah.
I'm a proponent of it. Budgetarily, it's a harder sell, but, I mean, then we control everything. You lose a lot of the problems that we have with them.
Right.
Even though we've been able to cut it down, philosophically, I understand that. But remind, what's the fee you're proposing for those parents? Is it 175?
175.
Is that a one-time fee or every year that they use our device?
Every year they use our device.
Because at some point, three times 175 is maybe less than the cost of an iPad.
$600 for the iPad, many with insurance.
Okay.
So, you're right, I mean, people might just say, I don't buy.
Most parents aren't buying the insurance, and most parents, you know.
Right, right.
Maybe I should have, because now I've been through three, but.
Ouch.
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, we've talked about this a while, and it may, again, it may not float this year, and that's okay. But I think it's important for us to talk about it. I didn't put bus fees in there, so that's good.
Well, because you've driven on Pound Street in the last two months.
Bus fees aren't in there. That's a perennial discussion. Anything else?
Anyone else have anything? Thank you very much.
Yeah, so again, you know, it's the initial one, so we're working on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for putting the work in, Michael, team.
I must say, this budget process and not being a numbers person is so clear now. I mean, for the most part, it's just so, such a good process the way it's done now, so I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, so next up are donations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would ask the committee to accept a $1,000 donation to Medfield CPAC from Louis and Mark, Louise, I should, I think it should be Louise and Mark K. Smith Family Foundation. That was given to us recently. With your approval, we can submit that to them.
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Is that foundation, is that the Mary Kay makeup books, or is that?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Just curious. We appreciate the money, anyway.
It's from Minnesota.
I think it's got to be the makeup people, right?
It is Louis, it says Louis.
Yeah. So with your approval, where's the Mary Kay foundation?
So the next item is the superintendent's report to the committee.
Madam Chair, I only have one thing in terms of our recognition. I've just had the opportunity to see some really good things recently in our district, going into the classrooms, and again, seeing some really good teaching going on. And it doesn't matter whether I'm in a kindergarten classroom or a high school classroom, just really good stuff going on. And as you know, I've been working with the principals to visit, we spent an hour and a half or so visiting the schools and visiting the classrooms and going through walkthroughs and just having a good conversation afterwards. So it's been, it's been great. You know, reaffirmed a lot of what I thought was going on here, and just gets me in there more often, so that's been good. The other piece is certainly had the opportunity to attend some students in the last couple of weeks that our kids continue to do well, both musically, athletically, and looking forward to the theater event that's coming up, because that was hilarious last year. The one-night show that Tom had mentioned at our last meeting. It's a really good program, so if you get a chance to go to that, I would encourage you to go. And just want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and a great New Year 2017.
Thank you.
Thanks. Excellent. So does anyone have anything?
Just from Stu Coe, just wrapping up this last week. We just do our annual candy cane sale, where being sold at lunch, I think for 50 cents, and kids can write a nice little holiday note to their friends, teachers, any faculty, and then we distribute those on Friday morning. And it's something we do every year, and it's not about the money for us. It's more just a fun thing we do going into break. And that's all we have planned.
I mentioned to Jeff before the meeting, I'm unlikely to make the meeting on the night, so just something to keep in mind if we run short of quarrel.
Winter Jazz Fest tomorrow night. We've got some guest people, jazz musicians, I mean, they all are, but special guests, so that should be fun tomorrow night, if you're free.
What do I have? A couple of things, I think the teachers are doing such a nice, over at Blake, the Christmas in the city that the eighth graders go to. Such a coordinated event, and my daughter came home telling me that they're one of the few schools that are actually invited back, because they actually get stuff done and they actually work.
It was a cold day, too.
They forced them to turn on the heat this year, I heard.
It was cold. But such a great meeting. And then my fifth grader came home with a story that I had never seen before about the Christmas Candy Bomber, which was an amazing story on YouTube about this World War II. He was like a fighter jet pilot that delivered candy. Just a great message that the teacher shared that I had never seen about giving back and the true meaning of Christmas, which I thought was amazing. I mean, it brought a tear to my eye, and it kind of, that they could teach the kids in such a nice way about giving back and the story, this man is still alive, I think he's like 92 years old. And she showed this video on YouTube, so if you have a chance to check it out, I think it's called The Candy Bomber, The Christmas Candy Bomber, amazing true story. And things like that, that I think aren't always part of the curriculum, that teachers kind of go the extra mile, that I think are, make the biggest impact on kids sometimes, and not only the things that are in the curriculum, but I think are just so important for our kids, you know. So, and Merry Christmas. That's it. So for the next future agenda items are the fiscal year 18 budget and the school improvement plans. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Now I'm going to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?